Of our Waverne City Council here on January 28th, 2019 here at Waverne City Council Chambers. With this starting off, we just make note that we have a few council members away, yet we still have a quorum. Councilor Bailey is away, Councilor Van Betje and Councilor Richards is away, but we still have a quorum and we are moving forward with this council meeting. To start off with, we're going to start with approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting held January 14th, 2019.
I'll move that to your worship.
I'll second that, your worship.
Any comments about any of the minutes? No, at this time, then we call for the vote. All in favor? Approved. Mr. Warren, are there any additions to the agenda?
Administration has no added.
Counselor, any mention? Nothing from the youth council. And instead of sitting back there in the far bed, move up to Mr. Bailey's desk. So you're sitting in kind of the far off our youth, either there, either there or whichever one you want to choose. So we don't need you sitting in the far off to the side. We don't have any public hearings and notices. There are no delegations, proclamations, or petitions. With this, we, let's start off with the reports of the standing committee. Who will be delivering that for the police commission? Anyone, Mr. Warren? Is anyone taking Mr. Van Betje's spot for that?
Your worship, I guess generally be Mr. Richards or Mr. Bailey, but they're also both absent, so.
So I can, if the report is there, we can, no? Sitting as a chair. But we'll basically scan through there. Basically, that where it started off, we had the meeting on Tuesday, January 22nd. And with this, just to do some of the highlights, Health Canada gave invitation to talk about edibles and there's, is in Vancouver and Ottawa. Neither one was paid trips, so we are not attending any of those meetings. And they're just discussing whether about the need for edibles. And, oh, let's see.
We're just arrow down.
Arrow down. Where's the, um... The, whoop, I missed it here. I'll have to get you back there to, then, um, I messed up here. I apologize. I'm trying to run a Mac here, so. Here, give me back into, um... Sorry, what, nothing, mess up. Make the council right there.
You can just arrow down.
Oh, just arrow down, okay. We'll just keep going here. The other, the other thing that was brought up onto the police commission, they made note of a variety of different, um, things as such. Just one more thing here. Give me back to the reports in the standing committee. Just bring me back up to the reports of the standing committee. No, no, reports of standing committees. Yeah, there it is, the police commission, there it is. Okay, there you go. Yep, full giving. All right, got it figured out. So with this also too, bylaw enforcement report under there, is talking about the number of parking tickets and such. And we are going to be having our bylaw enforcement officer, will be starting within the next couple of months. So we see a new officer addition to our police service. Notice to, Chief Pritchard also talked about impaired driving law update, providing information on such. And there are now two, three new type of legislations. Ones for having a certain amount of THC in your body for cannabis will be a certain fine. Higher amounts of THC will be other fines. And then the third category will be having combination of both THC and alcohol, and there'll, there'll be higher fines for such also. There is also, SGI is now talked about an update on photo radar as per, and that we as a city can apply for photo radar, and this will be discussed at our meeting as such, that at a future time, whether or not we will be moving forward, and we're going to be as a council asking for more information to be presented to us. Other than that, that was, is the basic statements of our police commission meeting at this point in time. Make motion that it's going to be filed, to be filed, receiving filed.
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
All in favor? Carried unanimously. Consent agenda, cash activity report.
Your worship, I'll move that the consent agenda consisting of cash activity report for December 2018 be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Carried. Motions, accounts payable?
Your worship, I'll move that the purchases in the amount of $422,067 from January 11th to January 24th, 2019 be passed for payment.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Carried. Tax arrears report?
Your worship, I will move that the tax enforcement arrears list for 2018 by the city assessor as per section three of the Tax Enforcement Act be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? None at this point in time? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Outdoor liquor permit by the Waverne Credit Union. Request, Mr. Warren?
Yes, your worship. So we received a request from the Waverne Credit Union in regards to them wanting to have a liquor garden request for their celebrating their 75th anniversary this year. So it's a pretty big event for them. They usually have an afternoon session when they kind of close off children's games. They want to expand a little more this year. So what they're asking for is a community street dance on June 21st. So looking to have approval to serve alcohol from 7:00 PM till 12:00 AM. Provide to councils, actually an area where they have it fenced off for where the alcohol would be served. That's actually been reviewed by our police chief, and there's no issues with that whatsoever. They'd be having the young fellows there to serve alcohol, and they'd also have security in place. So it's looking for approval from you as council for liquor license on the 21st of June from 7:00 PM till 12:00 AM.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, but I'm pleased to make a motion that the city of Waverne approved the request of the Waverne Credit Union to make an application for the issuance of an outdoor liquor permit for the family fun community, community street dance to Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority for the Friday, June 21st, 2019 from 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
And discussion? Mr. Warren, do you remember, I thought that we were, it was, the liquor act was changing, that we didn't have to give any more of these approvals. Do you know when that's coming into effect, or have you heard anything?
No, as of right now, still for outdoor events such as this, we still have to provide approval as a city.
Okay, so, all right. Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Introduction bylaws. This is the second reading on this. This was done at the last council meeting. First off, bylaw 2019-3395, amending zoning bylaw on Miller Road. Can we?
Worship, I'd like to make that motion.
Please.
I'd like to make the motion that the bylaw 2019-3395 to amend bylaw 2003-20, or -2099, the city zoning bylaw for the purpose of rezoning 2050 Miller Road from urban holdings to highway commercial to accommodate future development be read a second time.
Do you have a second, or?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
Worship, I'd like to make the motion that bylaw 2019-3395 to amend bylaw 2003-2099, the city zoning bylaw for the purpose of rezoning 2050 Miller Road from urban holding to highway commercial to accommodate future development be read a third time and passed.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
All in favor? Carried unanimously. Is it the third reading? Okay. With that, we move on to that bylaws passed. Moving on to bylaw 2019-3396, amending zoning of 410 Government Road. Do you have a motion?
Your worship, I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to make the motion that bylaw 2019-3396 to amend bylaw 2003-2099, the zoning bylaw to rezone 410 Government Road from residential to service commercial be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor?
Your worship, I'd like to make the third reading, that bylaw 2019-3396 to amend bylaw 2003-2099, the zoning bylaw to rezone 410 Government Road from residential to service commercial be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Very good. Waving, request to waive offsite development fee on 325 Queen Street. Mr. Warren?
Yes, your worship. This is a follow-up from our last meeting on January 14th in regards to Fido's Place. So there was discussion about waiving a fee, but we have to make sure we do the proper process for waiving that fee. So right now, the request is a waive of development levy of $1,562, which is the war portion of the fees. So based on our current development levy, you as council have the opportunity to waive that. So based on that, you guys can make a resolution to go ahead and waive that fee if you'd like. You have the discretion to do that.
Thank you, Matthew. I'm prepared to make a motion that the, that the council, city council requests, the request of Cindy Anne Beam of Fido's Place Doggy Daycare Training Center at 325 Queen Street to waive the offsite development levy fees as per section 6C of the Offsite Development Levy bylaw 2019-3388 be approved.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? I guess the discussion that I have to ask the other counselors, because we put this, we, we talked about this offsite development levy all the way through. Now, water is there already?
That's correct, yes.
So this development levy portion is for more water?
No, so it's based on the repurposing of the facility. So when it got rezoned, what happened is, is that they looked at the facility and our planning department made an educated request saying that they think that there should be development bylaw put onto that for water. So what happened at the last council meeting, council discussed that and decided that because of the war usage, it wouldn't be any more than what the past usage was for that space.
And that's why, just wanted to catch up to speed on that, so, on there.
Yes, your worship, yes. Maybe I can just maybe give you what happened at our last meeting, because you were, you were away. The offsite development levy that council prepared with, as you know, 10 or 11 months of hard work by people, is very good. However, this situation, the, the water level at this particular case was not extreme levels that didn't really go into the bite of the offsite development. The procedure that we did stays in place, but because of the situation that Cindy's doing, we thought in fairness to her, this is her second approach of trying to get something in Waverne. And council did agree that the bylaw that we had was too extreme of, for example, if it was a car wash, that's totally different because of water. So this, this is the rationale why we're waiving the fees.
Any more discussion? Nothing at this time? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Does, is there only one reading have to be done for that?
Yeah.
New business. Waverne Recreation and Culture Center, we'll be coming down to this. Mr. Warren, if you would give us our presentation.
I thank you, your worship. So we've actually went through our, our tender process for the project. So I'm going to be giving you an update of where we're at and the pricing we received for that project. So up on our board right now, so it's showing the exterior of the building. So going through the benefits of the proposed Waverne Recreation and Cultural Center. So this is identified through a facility plan. So this was finalized in 2012 by the Facility Advisory Committee and reviewed and approved by city council. So within that plan, they identified a number of different things that they want to see as a long-term plan for sport culture and recreational facilities. So within that, the whole plan was to develop a future plan for facilities that make an investment in sport culture and recreation infrastructure that incurring in a manner that would, one, enhance the quality of life of Waverne residents by meeting the highest priority needs of the present and future populations, and two, is aligned with the city of Waverne long-term infrastructure plans. One of the reasons why the location was chosen for the Waverne Recreation and Cultural Center, one is the, the connection with the future school that's planned in that location. And also, what council and what the Facility Advisory Committee seen out of that area is that it's, it's a multi-use, multi-generational park. Jubilee Park is a beautiful park. Some current amenities at that location right now are our Waverne Leisure Center, indoor and outdoor pool, 1.5 kilometers of tree-aligned paved walkways, six ball diamonds. So they have really good use for our modern ball system in the community. Multi-use sport fields with many smaller pitches that are used by both soccer and football. We have a three tennis and pickleball court equipped facility with lighting, a current outdoor rink and a playground area, all located there. Within this plan as well, it's a huge community partnership. So when we look at this facility, it's a partnership with the Cornerstone School Division. So right now, what would happen with this facility is that the Waverne Recreation and Culture Center will be completely owned and operated by the city of Waverne. What I mean by that is that we're constructing it, we can maintain that facility, we operate it, we take all the rentals, everything comes directly through the city. So if someone wants to book that venue, they come through the city. They not go through the school, it's directly from the city. So some concern's been put in the past of how our current partnership is with the Cogent Center. That's owned and operated by the school division, with us providing money into, into that facility. This one's exactly opposite that way, where we own and operate that facility. On the flip side, we have the school, same setup. They own and operate the school area. So, and they can provide rentals to the community and all those kinds of things as we move forward. The last part of this, we talked about shared community area. So within this project, there's a kitchen, washroom, parking lots, and the LED sign will all be shared. So within that, we have actually a joint use agreement where it would state who, one, operates it, two, who maintains it, and three, if there's any capital cost. So if there's any capital cost for any of those spaces, it's actually shared between the two owners. That's the only spot that, that's shared. So anything in the Waverne Recreation and Cultural Center is all the city. So a big thing for us is making sure that, one, we have a fine-tuned joint use agreement, and two, we make sure that these facilities are used to the best of their abilities to enhance the community and activities for the community. So this is showing the exterior views of the facility. So we have the southwest view. So this is if you go into the current parking lot and going into towards Jubilee Park, that'd be your view into the front of the facility. And then the south view. So this would be a view if you're looking over into where the current outdoor pool location is. So one thing that we're trying to do within the facility is have it welcoming with, with the colors that are showing there. Make sure it's a multi-use facility with both arts and recreational aspects, and make sure there's lots of different viewing areas, as you can see by lots of glass on the exterior of the building. So going back to two slides ago, I was talking about shared use and uses by the school and by the, the city. Located here in red, all this land is actually going to be owned and operated by the school division. Anything identified in this purple color is spaces owned and operated by the city of Waverne. So we made sure that there's also shared sites. When I talked about parking stalls, this is shared parking stalls that both will use within, within the facility. So we're trying to make sure that, one, it's a collaborative facility, but two, that we have distinctive uses as well for both of our spaces. So this is actually a better view of what it would look like, more of a 3D view of the spaces. So like I said, you have the elementary school, you have a daycare location right here, shared spaces, which is the kitchen and the washroom and a common hallway. And then you have the Recreation and Culture Center and an outdoor rink right in the back facility. So I think this slide kind of shows where we have our own distinctive areas and where we have our shared spaces as we move forward with the project. So going through the parking stalls, this is kind of the layout of the facility. So right here, you actually have staff parking for the elementary school. This is a bus hub for all the buses that come in for the, for the schools. You have three different playground areas. The daycare location I talked about, the school location, and then the city location, and then outdoor rink. Then we have a shared parking lot here, which is the current gravel parking lot that serves Leisure Center, the old junior high, and Jubilee Park. And there's 116 stalls located in a paved parking lot area.
And Fifth Street is at the bottom, and the swimming pool is off to your right.
Fifth Street's here, swimming pool would be over here.
Just so that we brought the idea of the orientation.
Thank you, your worship. So going through the facility itself, so this is the city and the shared space. I included actually the area for the school as well as for their gym area. This is show how it's a easy access and collaboration within both of those areas. So what we have here is the school gym, which can fit in one full-sized volleyball court, two half-court volleyball, and also three to four pickleball courts within that space. And then we come in down to this location here. This is actually the, the shared commons area. This is an access door. This would be Jubilee Park, Douglas Road would be up here. And this is actually where the large soccer pitch is. So there's an access here where people can use a kitchen space and a washroom space. There's actually a door right here that when the school is closed, they can have access closed to the school, but still have access in for the community if they have to use it. So the main usage for an elementary school gym, and if we look at some other communities, places like Humboldt or places like Worm and Hatcher have same kind of agreements where there's a city-owned portion, and then there's a, a school-owned portion. Big thing for us is making sure that there's access. With an elementary school, it tends to be after 6 o'clock, it's usually open when there's no school days or weekends, things like that, summertime. There's limited usage usually in these gym spaces. So with this collaboration, we would have access in to have more community usage. Because with the plan, as the school moves, moves forward, they will be closing three schools. So Queen Elizabeth, Suris School, and Hag School. So you will be losing some gym space, but you'll be actually creating some more gym space within this new location. And it is a much larger gym compared to our school gym. So if you go into a Hag School Gym or a Assembly by Park School Gym, it's a larger elementary school gym just because of sheer size of the school population. So the schools have actually been built for, I believe, 650 to 750 kids. There's a lot of space in there for that. As we said before, we have a shared kitchen space here. There'd be before and after-school programs. We use this for different cooking classes for the arts, similar to what we currently do at Signal Arts Center. Shared men's and women's washroom. So once again, we actually have another break-off point right here where this could be closed off if the school didn't want to come down and use our space and we wanted to have a separate event. So there's actually a close-off area there as well. We have three multipurpose rooms. These would be predominantly used for arts classes. So currently what we would use for our arts classes in the Signal Arts Center would be moved into this location. So these are three rooms. It can be three separate rooms or one large room. There'll be dividing walls between each one of the spaces to make sure there's ultimate, ultimate use of, of those spaces. As we move down, there's a pottery space. So once again, with us moving programs from the Signal Arts Center, we've been moving programs in this location for pottery. The biggest difference between this location and the current location is the current location has a lot of their storage right in the middle of, of the pottery space. This is trying to maximize space by moving all the storage to the outside walls and maximizing space in the, in the middle for classes. So we'll have pottery wheels in there, we'll have two kilns in that space. So we'll still be able to do both children's and adult pottery programs, plus do things like May Quately currently do with schools, and actually with the connection to the school, hopefully more children's programs for pottery. As we move down, this is the Waverne Arts Center gallery. So this location would be about one and a half times bigger than the current, current Ally Griffin Art Gallery. You have an office here for a curator, and then a storage for our permanent collection. Permanent collection's currently stored downstairs here at City Hall. So what we want to do is make sure that all the artworks in one location. Feel, feel bad for Regan right now. Our curator, she has to actually move stuff from basement of City Hall off to three different locations. With amalgamating more of her arts programming and more of her multipurpose programming, she won't have to do that anymore. She would have a majority of her permanent collection here in a humidified area. So it's actually really a first-class gallery. And our shows can actually increase as well as move forward. There's a lot of shows we cannot currently bring in because of the standards of our current galleries. So a big push for us to have a gallery that we can actually bring more high-class shows in and showcase more of our art from here and from afar. There's also a separate entrance for the art space. So if they want to have a gala event, then once again, there's a close-off door here that they can feel like they have their own space for, for an event in a more, a little more closed-off area. As we continue to move down, there's a kitchen area here. So what we could do in the future is actually have a commercial person come in, bring in like a Subway or a Tim Hortons or something small for that. It's, it's kind of, it's all roughed in right now, but it's something that we wanted to make sure that in the future, if someone wanted to bring in some kind of food service, we had something there. Right now, there's no plans for that, but it's roughed in for the future use. Coming in here is the main wing. So right here, we actually have a boardroom, and we have three office spaces. So what would happen is, is we would have our Director of Services, who's currently located at City Hall, move into this location. We'd have facility manager put into this space here, and then an open space for future staffing if we require. Then a main space. So if, if anyone's been to the current main space over at the Waverne Leisure Center, it's kind of the same look as that. A glassed-in area on the sides, and then open area for people to pay for all their stuff and get theirself something into the facility. As we continue to move down, this is the main entrance to the facility. Common area as we move in, and an elevator to take you to the second level. This is a playing climb area. So what we want to do is actually have an indoor playground with some climbing walls for the kids and a large indoor play area for, for inside access. Because right now, when the weather's like today... Because right now, when the weather's like today, high winds and really cold, there's nowhere for the youth to go and participate in activities. And so what we want to do is make sure there's a space here that children of all ages can go in and participate. We've been talking to some companies about some different designs. In the current design, as we move forward, there isn't anything in that space, but we'll do that after we move forward with the project. Right here is a mechanical room, which will give you access from outside into the facility if you have to bring anything into the facility itself. This is storage area. This is mechanical room, mechanical rooms, and then we actually have a Zamboni room. So as we move forward, I'll actually show you an outdoor rink that'll be over in this location here. So we'll actually have a Zamboni moved from the rink into this location. We'll purchase a new Zamboni for the arena, and then we'll have a Zamboni able to clear an ice surface for people to use. Down this wing here is eight dressing rooms, four of which have outdoor access. So these would be access for the outdoor rink or for events happening out in Jubilee Park if people need washroom facilities over and above what we already have in Jubilee Park. It's kind of a great layout for us, because right now, if you use the current outdoor rink, there is no real warm-up shack there. And this will actually add four areas that say, "Waverly Mire hockey team wants to have a practice." They can actually go out there and practice and actually have dressing rooms able to go out there and use that. And then we have janitor rooms, water access for the outdoor rink, and then four more dressing rooms. In the middle space here is a 45 by 60-meter indoor synthetic turf field. So it's a half a FIFA soccer field. It's predominantly used for 12 and under soccer when you have a smaller space like that. So each one of the fields can be put in half, or if you want to put in quarters, there's actually a curtain that goes right in the middle here to break it into two spaces. Another thing we're continuing to look at for the facility is potentially a cover for the floor. So if we wanted to bring in a trade show event, there's actually a plastic or a hardcover floor you can put in. If anyone's ever been to Mosaic Stadium for concerts, they have that harder grayish-looking floor. We've actually been looking into that for something you can cover over the field if you want to have other events come into this space here. Then we also have ample viewing here out to the park. Over here, we have a warm-up track area. It's actually going to be used mostly for baseball, where we'll actually have a batting cage and a pitching tunnel down this area here. So when Waverly Mire baseball, Waverly Beavers, anyone who wants to take part in any baseball activities, have a space that they can go inside, once again, during the winter months that we don't have here in town right now, to make sure that people have space to have access into that area. So here's some pictures. So the first picture is the main entry, so this is when you first walk in to the location into the reception area. Right below it is actually a reception area and offices, so it gives you a little bit of a better look what the reception area would look like as you move down the hallway. So this is the main door, and this would take you down towards the gallery space and down towards all our multipurpose spaces as you move forward. This is something that architects did that for us just for now, just what a playing climb would look like. This kid's having a good time, I think. So it's a nice open area. We want to have a seating area for families, a TV area when you first walk in, so you can make sure the kids are playing and make sure you still have some recreational stuff. Like I said, right now, this area is not developed, so what you see here is not what the play structure will look like. We'll be talking to some different play companies in Canada, see what they have for opportunities. But right now, that is not what it'll look like. We just want to see what the space would look like that way, but not what the play structure would look like. Right here is the field and into the four dressing rooms that, these are the ones that will not have access into the park. So this is rooms eight, seven, six, and five, and it shows the viewing area out to the park, and then also the running track right above, which I'll talk about when we hit the second level of the facility. So this is the gallery. So there's this secondary entrance right here, and this is the gallery. So nice, open viewing into the gallery space. Nice little seating area, or you can do a display area for different art pieces in this area. And then this is inside of the gallery. So you see a little opening here, and I'll talk about this when we go to the second level. It's actually a viewing from the top track into the gallery. It's kind of like you're in a shoebox, so you can look down if you're on the walking track and you're able to look down and see what people are doing in that space. Once again, nice, open space, lots of wall space for artwork, and then some natural light if needed for different events happening in that space. This is a look of the pottery space. So like I said, a lot of the storage off the side to make a large area in the middle to work on. These are double doors that actually lead into those multipurpose rooms, the three multipurpose rooms I talked about before. So if you have a larger class, you can actually open those doors and expand into that space. And then right here is the very last of the three multipurpose rooms with some storage off the side, and there'll be sinks in each one of the rooms. Something we currently don't have in our Signal Arts Center right now is sinks in each room. It's actually a better function for the arts programming to have, you know, both a wet and messy area to be able to do your work. So this is the community commons I talked about. So this is the door that comes in from Jubilee Park that goes down all the way, down to where the min space is, where the playing climb is. And then we have a kitchen space, and this is a joint-use kitchen that would be with the school. So right now, there's before-school programming over at Sura School for meals. And so they want to continue to do that program when this facility's opened up, and it's a great atmosphere that we can share a space that during school hours that they can use a space, then after hours, when the school is gone, the city can use that space more for our kind of events. Okay, moving off to the second level of the facility. So this is the upper level. It has a three-lane, 220-meter track. So we actually have a sport track in there. So it's kind of, it's Olympic version of the track, so it's a lot of cushion on it. When we were doing tours, we found a lot of tracks. We're actually resurfacing their facilities. A lot of them didn't have a lot of cushion on their tracks, so we actually went for a higher sport track. Has a longer life. It's great use for people who want to either have one high performance, or on the other side, if people just want to jog or go for walks, it's really easier on your joints that way. So we actually did a lot of research on what are the best options for a track space, and that's what we kind of came up with as we go forward with that. 288 seating area here for overhead viewing towards the lower area of the play surface. These are washrooms and mechanical rooms. This is a large, open space where people can have yoga classes, a stretch area before you go onto the track. This is a viewing area. This viewing area actually looks down into the playing climb area. So once again, like when I talked about the shoebox, this is the one for the arts, where you can look down. You can also look down into the playing climb area to see what people are doing for activities, make sure your kids are staying out of trouble as they're playing down there if you're going for a walk. As we move forward, there's four multi-sport simulators that we've planned in. So it's a big hit, I know, in some of our communities that people of all ages can go in there. So what we envision for that space is during the day, adult use, during the evening, you know, sometimes maybe family use or children's use, birthday parties, stuff like that. It's actually a really good flex space where you want to have events and parties. So also here, there's a kind of a, we call it a skyfold, but it's actually a garage door that comes up, where she can have this area closed off to the mini-gym or have a connection to both of them together. So we want to make sure that if you had a larger event, you could have this space rented and this space rented, or if you want to have separate events, you can have them separate away from each other. So moving into the mini-gym, this is kind of a rec gym. So when we were going through design of this facility, our ultimate goal wasn't to have a gym upstairs. It was actually supposed to be a mechanical room. With us having enough room downstairs, we were actually make a mini-gym upstairs. So this would be a recreational volleyball court, so not a full-size, a recreational-sized volleyball court, and enough for two pickleball courts, and then two basketball nets. So it's kind of a flex gym for flex usage, if people want to use it that way. And then also a storage room for that area.
You said that'll fit a volleyball court?
Yeah, it's recreational volleyball. So not competitive volleyball, recreational volleyball. So right now, the city runs a program of recreational volleyball that we actually use. The Eagles Gym, and before, we were actually using a Q E's Gym. And it'll free up more space for other people to use gym space, so the city's not using those. We can now use that space for our recreational programs. It's a little less competitive, and it actually opens up, one, Eagles Gym, Cognizant Center, the new elementary school gym for more competitive volleyball. Those spaces are made for that. It's a little larger for that, and it's just ready for that. For this space, it wasn't large enough to put that in there. It's more of a flex space as we move forward with that. And also, there's viewing areas. So we have a viewing area here that goes out to the baseball areas in Jubilee Park, and also windows all the way through here. And I actually have a video at the very end that'll actually give you a better view of some of those windows areas. So this is the flex gym. This is the fancy garage door we talked about. It's a skyfold, which opens up to open up into this room here, which is the simulator room. So this, like I said, has two pickleball courts. It's great for three-on-three basketball. It's great for things like Bammerton, recreational volleyball. And going down here, the simulators, they're only showing three, but there's actually a fourth that's over here. All this is accessible, so this actually has a ramp into it, so we want to make sure as many of our space are accessible for all people who want to use the facility. So this is the second level area. When you first walk in, you can see some people doing some yoga over here. Stretching area, it's actually an ample space. It's a lot larger than I thought when we were going through the area, which is great. So it actually gives you an extra area for people to relax, stretch, get ready to do your run-around, or get ready to go into the gym space for activities. And you can also see the track area, the three lanes, and then you can barely see right over here the viewing area, look down onto the field. Okay, last part of the project is an outdoor ice surface. So this is a 200-foot by 85-foot multi-use concrete pad. So this would be the same size of the ice that we have at Crescent Point Place. So what we're looking at is a multi-use, multi-sport, year-round use. So this will actually have dashboards, so that's actually like rink boards all the way around. It'll have glass all the way around. It'll also have a viewing area, you can see down here, it's actually a covered area. So when we talk about hockey practices, it's actually covered so people can go into that space and play a game. You have two benches, two teams, and lots of space to make sure they're covered from the elements if they have to use it for practices or anything else. For this, there's four dressing rooms, like I talked about before, over in this area here. They'll all have access into the facility or into the ice surface, a Zamboni room that I talked about before. And then we also have lights and basketball nets all the way around this. A cool part of this will be a concrete pad. Currently, we have a pavement pad on our current outdoor rink, and you cannot use that surface for anything other than when we fly up to ice, just because it's so warped right now, so waved. By having a pavement pad, you would have to pave it so much to make sure it keeps up to what you want. By having a concrete pad, you can make this use for things like lacrosse, because right now, lacrosse doesn't have an outdoor space that has boards all the way around that you can use outdoor in Waverly. That'd be a great use for them. Like I said, also, things like street hockey or things like basketball, or even if you want to have a community event, if someone wanted to have an event out in Jubilee Park and want to fence an area, this would be a prime location for that. So what we're trying to do with the project, with the school and the city, is to make a joint-use and shared-use spaces to make sure we can maximize, one, the opportunity to partner with a larger facility, and to also make sure it's a multi-use, multi-generational facility. So when we talk about uses, potential shared uses, like we talked about before, shared public washrooms, shared kitchen space, shared community commons area, access for the school if they want to have recesses into our soccer field, and then shared use for the public all and all for both facilities. We talk about joint-use spaces. So the Fieldhouse Activity Space, so if you look at a date like today, kids have indoor recess. And a lot of schools, what they do is when they have indoor recess, they actually go and go in the library or go in their classrooms. This will actually give them an area that they can actually have sport activities going on inside during the school hours when, actually, the city will not be as busy. On the flip side, they have their school gym. So at evenings, when they're not busy, it's a great time for us to make sure that our groups have an opportunity to participate in things like pickleball, things like volleyball, basketball, a little more larger area for that.
Will we be in charge of renting the gym out in the evenings?
Nope. So like I said on the very first slide, is that the city is 100% on our opportunities for our facility, and then there's that way as well.
But we'll let them into the gym?
Yep.
We'll let them in?
That's correct.
But they have to still book through the school?
That's correct. So there'll be rental rates set up by the school, and they'd have to rent that space to the school. But with us, because we do want to hire a facility manager, they'd be in charge of talking to the school, making sure we can get the community to use into that space. And then we also talk about outdoor learning commons. So actually, when we talk about those three different playground areas, it's actually three playground areas that our community can use as well after hours. So there's lots of potential shared space usage and community space usage with joined together as a multi-use facility. So going into the fun part, so tender results came through. So we had four qualified bidders for this project. Of that, the bids came in at $45 million, $49,710, $741, and that's for the low bid of Wright Construction out of Saskatoon. So the way it works is that it's an aggregate bid, so this is a bid of what the school and the city received for both of ours. So we moved down to the city portion. So the lower bid was, once again, Wright. And so for the city portion, it's $20 million, 396,183. Cost breakdown for that is construction of the WRCC building is $19 million, 673,093. For the community commons was $303,000, and then for the south parking lot, it was $419,250. So that's how it's broken out. So the school will have to go back with the same kind of presentation I'm doing for their portion. I'm coming tonight for you guys to talk about the portion from Wright. So based on the project, there's a little more factors involved with the construction. So one is the construction of the facility. So if successful, Wright would be the contractor for the project. So that would include the construction of the facility itself, the commons area, 50% cost of the city, south parking lot, 65% cost of the city, outdoor rink, concrete and pad, and then the lights. We've actually also taken away some things that are outside the contract. Some reasons for that is that we can actually internally do those purchases. We don't have to pay the architect or the G C for that work, stuff that we can actually do internally without adding additional costs to the project. So that includes the simulators, the play structure, the outdoor rink boards, maintenance equipment, so that includes things like the tractor for making sure that the field itself is maintained, the Zamboni for the outdoor rink or for the arena, but maintenance for the Zamboni for the new outdoor rink, furniture, sound, security, and interior and exterior signage. So based on that, it's about $1.5 million for that. Professional fees, so we have project manager, so that's Midgard out of White City, or actually they're in Regina now, architectural, so that's one, we've been working with Number 10 out of Winnipeg, and Site 360 out of Regina, geotechnical, and then commissioning, which is Dan Tech. So based on that, for all those professional fees, it's $1.85 million. And then we developed a contingency of 5%, which is $1,253,817. So total cost for this whole project would be $25 million. Any questions? Okay. So project timeline. So right now, we're on January 28th. We're looking at, we're in the contract to Wright. Construction period, so Wright would want to start construction here in March and have finalization of construction period of April of 2021. Commission would go from April until June of 2021. Substantial completion would be June of 2021, and then projected official opening would be September of 2021 to be in line with when the school would open up. Moving forward for project funding, things we'd be looking at would be naming rights. So that includes facility and program spaces, grants, so federal grants, provincial grants, and other grants. So other grants include things like COOP has a community grant that's coming up, things through sketch and parks and recreation, things through federal government, different accessibility funds. So there's a lot of different funds I'll be looking at for grants. Our Leisure Director, Andrew Crowell, will be looking into a lot of different ones, and he already has started to do that as well. And also, City of Waverly internal loans. So talking about internal loans, we have many internal loans that we currently do for facilities that are actually coming up to our due point for those. So a good example is we have loans coming due for Crescent Point Place and the sports arena renovations. We have ones for capital projects we did over at the Waverly Leisure Center. We have grants coming up for the paddling pool and the River Park Spray Park, Cognizant Center as well. So we have a lot of loans coming So we have a lot of loans coming up that actually would be put right towards this facility. The way that we do internal loans is that we always wait until a project is 100% complete before we start paying off loans. So to pay for this project internally, that would not start until 2022. So whenever we have projects, that's usually the common practice we do and we'd be looking at a 15-year internal loan. So the internal loan would be from 2022 until 2037 would be what the requests I would have for council for internal loan for the project. One last thing, just going back to Wright's bid, we actually asked a letter from them about local content. The biggest thing that they actually told us is that success for them is driven by collaborations and aligning with their goals with their stakeholders and they want to promote innovation. So they're committed to a team approach that will benefit the local community. As such, they will endeavor to utilize labor and solicit material from Waverne District. They're excited to share lasting difference to the community and local economy, ensuring success to all participants. So it's a big thing that they want to push. It's something that you as council asked me to ask them through the process, that they use our locals to make sure that we can have a sustainable project and to help our economy here in town. So it's the biggest thing they ask for and we make sure we ask that for them. Actually, we'll be launching a website if approved for this tonight. And we'll actually have this letter from Wright on there as well to make sure it's up and loaded and showing it that way. One last thing before I'm done my presentation, before I open up questions to you as council. I actually have a presentation, so this will be a rehash of the 66% look at the project and this will be what the 100% look would be if completed.
And this film will be linked on our website, linked to YouTube on our website.
This would be linked on our website as well, that's correct. Super slow-mo today, looks like. So this is showing the exterior of the building, moving into where the outdoor rink is. Those are the eight dressing rooms over top of Jubilee Park. And that's the school gymnasium and into the school area. And you can see the brown area right there is actually the playground space. And then that's the childcare area and then the shared parking.
So there'll be lots of parking with 165 stalls?
116 stalls, yeah.
Be lots of parking?
The video online won't be as choppy as what we're seeing tonight and that's, sorry for that. So you can see the playing climb area as you first walk in. Moving right into the indoor field space. This is the hallway going towards community commons, going past the gallery space. And going towards the party space, you can see there's some viewing areas that people are sitting and watching from the lower level. Upstairs viewing area, looking down onto the plain surface. This view will be walking into the multipurpose mini gym that's upstairs. So it has a view over to the leisure center. The connection into the simulator room.
And the simulator room will be rentable?
It'll be rentable, yeah. All spaces are rentable. Kind of plan for those kinds of spaces are before and after school programs, out use, things like that. So we want to make sure you can maximize the use from when you open up at 6 o'clock in the morning until once closed at 10, 11 o'clock at night. So this is a view out to Jubilee Park, where the Santa Taff area is. I believe next one will take you through to the, from the soccer pitch into the community commons area. This will show you a better look of proximity to the school gym space. It's like glass area on your right is the gym, so the school gym. And so that door you see right ahead of you, that'd be the lockoff spot where the city would have access after hours with the school being closed. Back in. So as requested, this will be on our city website if approved tonight to move forward. Open up to any questions?
Before we start the questions, first of all, we'll start with Mr. Mikkel, he can ask a question. But just want to stand from council, myself and council, very well done to you and all your team on this whole project. It's very, very commendable for the amount of time and effort and work you've put in. I know you've put in hundreds of hours getting it to this point, so it's very commendable. Mr. Mikkel?
You worship, you took the words out of my mouth and truly so. Matthew, Greg and Andrew here worked a lot of good hours on this and we thank you. Matthew, the one question I have, all the pictures show a flat roof. Can you tell us if there's a bit of a slope to it?
There's a bit of slope to the roof. So what they want to have is they want to have not such a slope where it becomes a danger to people around the edge of the building, because it is like a 30-foot plus high roof. So there is a slope to the roof, but not a massive slope to the roof, there is a slope to it.
Thank you, Matthew. And Waverne, this is an exciting time for Waverne and community, so let's get at it.
Mr. Joseph?
Thank you, worship, Matthew. Just a couple minor questions that I think I have a pretty good idea of what they are, but just for more for the public side. Besides the fact that I'm very excited for this big project coming up, roughly how many square feet is the building? That's one thing that never came up.
It's 80,000 square feet. I was always waiting till Winston was here, but he wasn't here. He usually asks that question, I couldn't give the straight answer for it, but it's 80,000 square feet. So it's quite a large, large structure.
And there was talk about using a few pieces from the old Service Valley building internally. Is that still on the docket also?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things. One is an LED sign outside of the building. We're actually talking about using that as a base for the LED sign. So we're actually talking through that if it's feasible. Numbered, or sorry, 1080 out of, or 360 now, out of Regina, sorry, so many numbers that they throw at us. Site 360 out of Regina actually brought someone who did a historical analysis of the tinsel stone that was at Service Valley. And they actually gave us a full rating of what was usable, what wasn't usable and what we should look at using for the facility. So one, we're looking at doing it for exterior signage for the LED sign. Two, there is some stuff that actually be inside the building. So when we looked at the admin area, there's actually some tinsel stone that's at the very bottom of that. There's actually a quite predominant one also beside where the elevator is for the facility. They're also talking about maybe potentially using it for some seating area up front, but we haven't got into that. But they actually did a really good job of analyzing all the pallets that we had. So we have pallets that are actually located at our Public Works Building. And they actually went through and gave us an analysis of what kind of age and what kind of use they're. So we want to see some historical value into this and to use those pieces because they are quite unique. And we don't want to have it to loss that they're there. I know we've used them for some of the signage that when you go into Riverwood. But there's similar uses you can use for those bricks, we want to use those.
Okay. Also, what you had mentioned on the school side, they will be closing Hague and Service and QE. What about us as a city? What changes for us, what buildings won't be in use anymore?
Yeah.
I guess from that side of it.
A couple of things, one is the current outdoor rink that is there will not be there anymore. So if they want to start construction on this within the next month or so, we actually will have to remove that outdoor rink and build a new outdoor rink. The other one will be the Signal Art Center. So for us, long-term, we were planning long-term about leaving that facility. The next step is to figure out what we want to do with that facility as we move forward. It is a municipal heritage facility. With that, it will not be turned down as a city. But for us, we have to make sure that we do the proper process of, one, determine what we want from that building as we move out and two, what administration and council want to do long-term for that facility and how you want to move forward with that facility.
And what about the basement of the library?
The basement of the library would just, nothing really changed. Actually, they would use it as a program space.
Just as a program space?
So we actually put new flooring in that space and that was to make sure it was a flex space for them, because they always wanted that to be a flex space. So the only thing we remove is the paintings that are taken on and off those walls every six weeks. We can remove the lighting, the lighting literally doesn't have any use moving into the new facility. But that facility doesn't change whatsoever, it actually becomes another program space for the library to do more community outreach.
And one last for you, because I've been asked this a few times. Is there an opportunity for the, for example, the gym upstairs, a multipurpose room for bringing in outside catering? Is it licensable in the art gallery for up and downstairs?
Yeah, yeah, so like any city owning and operating facility, we can provide license. So right now, if you come to any of our facilities, if it's the Glock Center in the multipurpose or not in the pool area, if you go to the Signal Art Center, if you go to the multipurpose spaces over there, they're all serviceable that way. That wouldn't change for these spaces. We have to make sure that we bring liquor and gaming in to follow the right processes. They have to review the space before they allow us to start doing that. And then it goes back to the question that Mayor Roy had to me about liquor and gaming. We, for indoor facilities, have all the right to provide licensing for those, but not for the outdoor ones. We would just make sure we bring liquor and gaming into the Scoville area first and provide us to go ahead to go ahead and do that. It's actually a great space where you can have other smaller events in either the gym space or in the multipurpose space, which is the simulator room, where you can have one large event and do it all that way. So that wouldn't change at all.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, thanks to everybody that's involved with this. Looks like a great project, I know Matthew's put a lot of work into it. Just a question I have, revenue stream. I know we're not going to pay for the building by renting it out, but have you done any calculations on what kind of revenue you hope to generate with it? And also advertising within? Is there opportunities for people to advertise within the complex to generate revenue to help offset costs?
Yeah, so for your very first question, Council Wheeler, what would happen for that is that we're mandated by council to 50% recovery. That's what we do for any facility, so it doesn't matter if it's the current art center. It doesn't matter if it's indoor, outdoor pool or if it's our arenas, we're mandated to 50%. So that's what we have actually done. We've done some early analysis of what it would cost for additional staffing. So you would have to have a new stream of maintenance staff. Because right now, we have maintenance staff that work at the Glock Center, we have maintenance staff that work at the arena, so we'd have to have more staff. We're talking about having a facility manager with additional staff as well. So we've actually looked at not having to operate Signal Hill and then potential revenues as we move forward, but we'd have to make that 50% recovery as mandated by council. Second thing is regarding sponsorship. I did touch, just briefly on in the presentation about funding, about naming rights and about space naming. So right now, our leisure services director, Andrew Crowe, is actually currently working on a sponsorship package where we'll be looking at additional revenues and that'd be a great way, one, to reduce what we have to do for an internal loan and two, bring in some more operating funding into that facility.
Thank you. The, and with the closure of the different schools, we will also be speaking to the school board, I take it, to decide between the cities as we move forward in the years as to where, what is going to be done with those properties within the cities.
Yeah, so your worship, that's ultimately up to the southeast Cornersdale School Division, what they want to do with the schools. Of the three schools, we only know of one right now that will be demolished, so that'll be Queen Elizabeth. So in the long-term plans of when they did the Cognizant Center and the renovations to the comp, that was always supposed to be a parking lot. So we know that already, that's actually in the school's information that they will be demolishing Queen Elizabeth School. For the other two schools, we don't know. If opportunities come up, the cities will be willing to talk and discuss those facilities. But we have not discussed that at this time yet about what the future is for those facilities.
Okay, Landen, as the youth mayor, any questions, comments?
No. This is one thing that lots of people have been asking me about, like at school and stuff. It's definitely something that lots of people are getting excited for. And it's, I heard, like when you did our presentation to the youth council, you made sure that it was good for lots of different people, like people with disabilities, seniors and the youth. So thanks for your hard work.
Yeah, the big thing we shoot for Landen is to make sure it's a multi-use, multi-generational facility. Accessibility is a big thing for us. I know when I was going through drawings and I may pointed that during the presentation about the simulator room. I made sure I talked to architects, there wasn't a lip to walk up to the simulator. They want to make sure there's a ramp to go up to that space and indoor walking track for people to use. And walking tracks can be used for people who are children all the way to seniors, all the way through and to make sure they can have that. And we want to make sure there's a space that youth can use and youth can participate in. And there's lots of different opportunities you can have for the field space. We look at a place like North Balfour. They actually purchased a large inflatable climbing wall that they put right in the middle of their indoor surface where people can go have a climbing event or a fun event. That's something that'd be more geared to you than Council Mikkel. So, something a little different. So, so there's opportunities and we want to make sure that this facility isn't just for one area of the population. That's for as many people as possible. It is a large investment for the city and it's a large facility itself and we want to make sure it's really used to its most potential.
I know although we talk city all the time, it is also becomes a regional focal point too within the region because so many of the other people around, it's a game, we'll rent to whoever. And as, it'll be fitting the timing. It'll be one of the cultural centers that is quite unique for this whole region and area out there. Very well done again. So I guess we require a motion to accept tender?
Your worship, I will make a motion that we accept the tendered bid from Wright Construction for the cost of $20 million, 396,183 and 10 cents plus taxes for the Waverne Recreational and Cultural Center.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? If there's no further discussion, call a question, call in favor. Carefully announced, Lee. So the project moves forward and it should have its commencement date of approximately beginning of March.
Yeah, so what would happen now is that we have to have a meeting with Wright Construction. The school is still waiting for approval as well. So they would have construction meetings to decide when they would start construction of the facility. And like I said in my presentation, I'm thinking that's going to happen here in March.
Very good.
Thank you, your worship.
There's no inquiries or announcements, there's no notice of motions. And with that, we call for adjournment. But again, thank you again, Matthew and your team for all the work. This is one of our largest projects that we haven't seen for a long time. This is besides our facility, our water facility. We're doing two very large projects and for both, between the engineering and yourself on managing this, the whole city management and engineering and such, we thank all you people for their very hard work. Thank you. And with calling it that, we call this meeting to adjournment.